Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here with us tonight. We are waiting on our mayor who is en route. He should be here shortly, so thank you for being patient with us tonight.
Good evening and welcome to the November 1st, 2023 meeting of the Roseville City Council. I'll ask our city clerk to call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernice Coney.
Here.
Councilmember Elbert.
Here.
Councilmember Maldonza.
Here.
Councilmember Ricucci.
Here.
And Mayor Haddishelt.
Here.
Thank you.
And you know what? I look out here and this just is bringing me joy. And I'd like to ask Girl Scout Troop 1326 if they would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Before you leave, though, can we do a roll call? Right, we won't have the city clerk do it, but would you tell us who's with us tonight?
Yes, we're Girl Scout Troop 1326, and we have Isabel, Sidney, Jade, Zara, Lizzy, Whitney, and Lena.
How long's the troop been organized? And where do you draw from?
So we are in West Roseville, so Orchard Ranch, Westbrook, Riego Creek, and Heritage Oaks, and they're all in first grade, so we've been a troop since halfway through last year. So they're starting to get ready.
Wow. No, it just brings such joy. I... You know, we'll try to move the meeting along orderly, but if there's photo ops, you know, we're not shy up here, so. Anyway, I'll ask the city clerk to announce the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 1st City of Roseville Regular City Council meeting. Agendas are available at the end of the staff table to your right or online on our city's website. All comments from the public should be directed to the City Council and not to any member of the public or anyone in the audience. All speakers must speak from the podium as this meeting is being recorded. For comments on non-agenda items, members of the public may address the City Council regarding any item not listed on tonight's agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of our City Council. Public comments on non-agenda items will be limited to three minutes per speaker. The collective initial period for this segment is 25 minutes. Any speaker that did not have the opportunity to speak during this first segment will have an opportunity at the end during our second segment for council comment, public comment. The Brown Act does prohibit our City Council from taking action, debating, or discussing any item that is not listed on the agenda tonight. For comments that are listed on the agenda, speakers will be provided with five minutes to make their comments and provide input to the City Council. Time will be monitored, and once the red light begins to flash at the podium, we request that the speaker please conclude their comments. Lastly, if addressing the City Council tonight, please consider stating your name for the record. And with that, thank you for your civic participation tonight, and welcome to the City of Roseville.
All right, yes, welcome very much. I'd like to ask Vice Mayor Bernice Coney if she would join me at the podium for our first presentation, which is a proclamation designating Roseville a Purple Heart City. I see some familiar faces, but not all. Good evening.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
So I ask Vice Mayor Bernice Coney to join us because Vice Mayor Bernice Coney is a veteran of the United States Navy. And I really wanted her to be part of our proclamation, so. Start off, whereas the City of Roseville has a proud history of supporting our active military and veteran population, and whereas the Purple Heart Medal is the oldest medal, military medal in the nation, established by General George Washington at Newburgh, New York, on August 7th, 1782, during the Revolutionary War. And whereas the Purple Heart Medal was first awarded, was the first award made available to the common soldier and is specifically awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces who have been wounded in combat or have paid, or have paid the ultimate sacrifice for our freedoms, being killed in action against a declared enemy of the United States, and...
Whereas the mission of the military order of the Purple Heart is to foster an environment of goodwill among combat wounded veterans and their families, promote patriotism, support legislative initiatives, and most importantly, to make sure that we never forget the sacrifices of our military servicemen and women. And whereas Roseville has a large veteran population with many of its veterans being Purple Heart recipients, whereas the City of Roseville has always supported its military population, given the community's greatest admiration for all men and women selflessly serving their country and the United States Armed Forces.
Whereas the City of Roseville appreciates the sacrifice of each Purple Heart recipient made in defending our freedom and believe it is of the utmost importance that they be acknowledged, not just on National Purple Heart Day, August 7th, and Veterans Day, which is coming up later this month, within this city in recognition of their courage and observance of their honor. Now therefore, I, Bruce Haddishelt, Mayor of the City of Roseville, on behalf of my colleagues on the City Council, do hereby proclaim the City of Roseville as a Purple Heart City honoring the service and sacrifice of men and women in uniform wounded or killed by the enemy while serving to protect our freedom, and encourage the citizens of Roseville to show their appreciation for the sacrifice each Purple Heart recipient made while defending the right of freedom under the banner of our nation's flag.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, and on a...
Thank you.
And a personal note, if I could, before we do this, my father-in-law has three Purple Hearts. He did two tours of duty in Vietnam, and Lieutenant Larry Rupp is one of those, one of those, yours, here's a proclamation for you, and we want to get a picture with everyone that's here, and please, podium's yours.
Mr. Mayor, can we, we'd like to present this to the city also.
Okay.
It's our recognition of, your recognition of us, if you will, by the Purple Heart symbol.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And if you want to say a few words, and others in the chapter want to say a few words, that'd be great.
Very few. Thank you again for this honor. I'd like to have some of the members of our local chapter, which comes out of Folsom, stand up and I'll introduce them to you. To your right, immediate right, is Sergeant Chris Archuleta, Army Medic, Iraq War. Joe DiPaoli, 3rd Marine Division, Vietnam. Jesse Nivares, Army, Vietnam. Ron King, Navy, Vietnam. And Bruce Hodgman, who is one of your fellow citizens of the City of Roseville, two-time Purple Heart Award winner. He didn't duck twice. From the 3rd Marine Division. Thank you.
Oh, you have one, you have the one there.
Oh, sorry, sorry. And this is Colonel John McKay. The Colonel was wounded in the same spot I was, about the same time, although he was wounded much more severely than I was. He went on to have a full Marine Corps career and retired as a Colonel.
Very good.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, I think there's a photo op. We lost the Girl Scouts, so. Must've been homework or something. Could we have all the Purple Heart and those come front? We'll take a photo and... Robert Dugan, whose son is serving currently in the Marines, to take a photo along with our other staff.
Yeah, we're gonna come right up here. They'll get us organized.
Would the two gentlemen who also served, you know, come forward? You want to be in the picture?
No, sir, I'm not a recipient.
Okay. I respect that.
All right.
No photographer today?
Okay, I'm gonna help you guys out. Okay. So how about you two, I am, how about if you two kind of tilt toward each other and you back up? You guys move that way a little bit, we're gonna scrunch everybody in. But just at like a 45-degree angle, just like that, right? There you go. Thank you, Mayor Bruce. There you go, right in there. Councilmember, councilmember.
Yes, right.
You guys got the program all ready? I think we've only done this a lot longer than these. There you go.
Thank you, Robert.
You bet. My pleasure to be of service. This afternoon, the Sutter Club had their Marine Corps birthday. Just so you guys know, they did a little celebration like nine days early. But I will send this to all of you. I'm sure I got at least one good one. I got a lot. Thank you, everyone, for your service, including the council for your service to our city.
Picture your finger in that one.
Thank you very much. And then thank you for the pins. Appreciate that. All right. We have another proclamation tonight. Would Cameron Law, Cameron Law? Yeah, hey, Cameron.
Hard to follow that one.
Yeah.
I was at the Sutter Club today.
Okay. Let's take it out there. Good evening. I figured out what time it was. Do some cleanup here. You know, Roseville has a strong ethic about entrepreneurship.
That's what I've heard.
And, you know, and right across the street, we have, you know, a center for innovation and Growth Factory, but we wanted to, in recognition of Global Entrepreneurship Week, November 13th, November 13th through the 19th of this year, we wanted to present you with this proclamation. Whereas most of the jobs created in the United States in the past decade have come from the creative efforts of entrepreneurs and innovators and small businesses engaged in endeavors ranging from micro businesses to large-scale venture. And whereas entrepreneurs have been the source of economic innovation throughout our nation's history, and our society has improved due to the innovative ways of doing things that have been brought about by people who market their ideas. And whereas small businesses are the driver of economic vitality across the region, particularly in rural and underserved communities, accounting for two-thirds of the job. And whereas Global Entrepreneurship Week is the world's largest celebration of the innovators and job creators who launch startups that bring ideas to life, drive economic growth, and expand human welfare. And whereas the Greater Sacramento Region's week-long celebration of entrepreneurship and the Global Entrepreneurship Week encompasses dozens of local and regional events throughout the Greater Sacramento area, each designed to expose citizens and constituents in the 6th County region to the idea of starting and running a business. And whereas those events, from large-scale competitions to teaching entrepreneurial skills in our regional higher education institutions, connect participants to potential collaborators, mentors, and even investors, introducing them to new possibilities and exciting opportunities. And whereas the Greater Sacramento Region, City of Roseville embraces the entrepreneurial spirit, exploring new ideas, seizing opportunities, and acting upon them in a spirited culture of innovation to create 21st century jobs, a vibrant economy, and a working region where all residents have equal access to economic prosperity and the chance to start and successfully own their own business. Now therefore, I, Bruce Haddishelt, Mayor of the City of Roseville, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim November 13th through the 19th, 2023, as Global Entrepreneurship Week, and encourage the community to support local entrepreneurs, whether they're coffee shops or, you know, those are...
You got it.
Third-Wave Coffee, right? Or small business innovators by recognizing the values that they bring to our community.
Thank you, Bruce.
You're welcome. And you may say a few words.
Well, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the City Council for recognizing Global Entrepreneurship Week. It's just a testament to you all as a city. I've been over at the Venture Lab all afternoon and getting to see innovators and even young innovators, high schoolers, that are working on creating new ideas. And for me, when I've looked at the City of Roseville, you really leaned into entrepreneurship as a driver for economic development, and it's a key element to creating opportunity and jobs that's going to grow not only the city but our region going forward. And in terms of Global Entrepreneurship Week, it's not only a regional celebration, but one that we're celebrating the role entrepreneurship plays across the globe. In our vision, the center that I lead at the Carlson Center at Sacramento State is that this region is a premier hub for innovation and entrepreneurship and putting us on that map that we are doing those things, and the Roseville Venture Lab and your partnership is an example of that. One of the highlights that I did want to call out for the week of November 13th through 19th is the Sacramento Entrepreneurial State of the Union, which is on Monday evening. That will be at the Carlson Center at Sac State, and we'll be focusing on three core conversations. So one, the entrepreneur's journey and how they navigate resources such as those that you support here in the City of Roseville. We'll also be talking about the role entrepreneurship as economic development and how we can invest in those that support founders in building greater connectivity along the continuum of a startup growing into being a larger business. The last element, we'll be looking at our investment landscape as a region. So we know one of the biggest challenges for entrepreneurs in succeeding is access to capital, and so we're looking at how can we foster a dialogue to increase that accessibility to early-stage capital to get them started and growing those businesses. And so I wanted to just thank you all for recognizing that week and called the City of Roseville and its constituents to engage in the conversation and go support your local small businesses. That can be your coffee shops, but it also can be apps and things like that that you utilize on your phone or in your own business. And I just wanted to recognize the partnership that the City of Roseville has with the Carlson Center. We've deeply engaged throughout Global Entrepreneurship Week in a variety of events such as our Startup Challenge, and have loved to see the partnership you've all had with the Growth Factory, which is near and dear to our hearts as well. So thank you for the recognition and look forward to seeing you all next Monday at the State of the Union at Sac State. Awesome.
Thank you very much, Cameron.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, well, now we'll move to the part of the agenda where we have public comments. These are public comments on items not listed on the, not listed on the agenda or the consent calendar. Is there anyone who has public comment on anything not on the agenda? We'll move to the consent calendar, and I'll request the city clerk to announce the procedures for addressing the, addressing the City Council.
Thank you. All matters on consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be approved by one motion of the City Council. There will be no discussion on consent calendar items unless a member of the City Council, the staff, or a member of the public pulls an item for further discussion. At this time, we have a request to pull items 7.10 and 7.14. Staff has made no other request. Is there anyone in the public that would like to pull any items from consent calendar tonight? Seeing none, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the City Council will consider approving consent calendar items 7.1 through 7.9, 7.11 through 7.13, 7.15 through 7.20. May I please have a motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernice Coney.
Yes.
Councilmember Elbert.
Yes.
Councilmember Maldonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Ricucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haddishelt.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Thanks. And as our city clerk said, item 7.10, which is work experience cooperative agreement with Placer County Memorandum of Understanding. This is such a great program. I know over the weekend I met a high school student who was, you know, interning for the City of Roseville, and as I was reading my packet, I went, you know, we need to understand how we're bringing up our new workforce and these types of opportunities. So we have our Economic Development Manager, Melissa Aguiano, with us tonight.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Melissa Aguiano, your city's Economic Development Director, and I'm here to give a brief overview of the work experience cooperative agreement with Placer County. As workforce development becomes increasingly challenging, the city continues to look for opportunities to create awareness, interest, and exposure to career pathways and jobs in the public sector. This is another program that meets those efforts, and we're here to present that. This program is coordinated through the Placer County Health and Human Services Department, and it's a program that offers Cal work participants valuable hands-on work experience by placing them in agencies and organizations to be trained and skilled. Wages and workers' compensation are covered fully and funded by the Community College Foundation for up to 1,000 hours per fiscal year, and the city will work with Placer County to ensure that the placements are mutually beneficial to candidates and to the city. Work assignments can't displace current city employees nor fill allocated vacancies. Rather, this is really a program and an opportunity to provide WEX participants with valuable training. with valuable training and skills so that they can continue on their job and career paths. Overall, it's a great approach to offer experience and develop the pipeline, as the mayor mentioned. The city was an active participant in the WEX program for several years, but took a pause on the program during the pandemic. And so now we're back and we're interested in re-engaging in the program. And we actually have a unique opportunity and potential to launch this with the first full kind of circle opportunity by placing a program participant to get training and exposure in our housing division, which could potentially also be a WEX participant also. Tonight, we're recommending that the City Council adopt a resolution to authorize the city manager to execute an MOU between the city and the county regarding the Work Experience Cooperative Agreement. And we will be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions? I'll open it up for public comment. Any public comment on the item? I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council to see if they have any comments or any additional questions.
Just a great opportunity for young people to get started and seeing what there is here in the city of Roseville and maybe take a job sometime.
Anything? Okay. I'll ask the city clerk to read the motion then.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item 7.10, the City Council will consider adopting Resolution Number 23425, approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Roseville and the County of Placer, and authorizing the city manager to execute it on behalf of the City of Roseville. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rucucci. And Mayor Haldeshel.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
The next item I was asked to be pulled off is the Galleria Overhead Charging Project. And it's not really, you know, one of the, this is why I wanted this off, was to highlight regional cooperation and traffic congestion relief on Highway 65 that might come as a result of this because this charging station is part of a Rapid, Rapid Bus. Tell me.
Express bus.
Express bus. There you go. So with us, we have our Public Works Director, Jason Shikowski, and our Alternative Transportation Manager, Ed Schofield.
Thank you, Mayor Haldeshel, and members of the council. As the mayor said, my name is Jason Shikowski, and I am your Public Works Director. I'm pleased to introduce to you tonight a request to accept a $500,000 grant to cover the cost of constructing a battery electric bus charging depot at the Galleria Mall. Joining me tonight is Ed Schofield, your Alternative Transportation Manager, who will provide a little background and some of the details of the project. So, Ed?
Thanks, Jason. Good evening, Mayor Haldeshel, members of the council. The need for the Galleria Charging Depot comes from a planned new regional express bus service called Rapid Link. The Rapid Link Bus Service was originally named the South Placer Express when the project was initially developed by the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency, or PCTPA. The service is a three-year pilot program that connects South Placer County with Sacramento's Light Rail System. Several years ago, PCTPA selected Roseville Transit to be the operator of this new service. Since that time, PCTPA, in cooperation with the city of Roseville, has secured grants and other regional funding to support the project's capital and operational costs. The future Rapid Link Express Bus Service will consist of a stop in Lincoln, and then stops at the Galleria and the Sutter and Kaiser Medical Facilities, and then to the Watt I-80 Light Rail Station in Sacramento. It will provide weekday service with 30-minute frequency from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. The project includes the acquisition of five electric buses and also includes the construction of the overhead chargers at the Galleria. In order to provide 30-minute service, all five electric buses are needed each day. With all five buses in use, we're unable to bring the buses back during the day to the Roseville's courtyard to recharge the batteries. Because of this, there is a need to provide some type of midday charging somewhere along the Rapid Link route. Staff reviewed possible charging locations and determined the best location would be the Galleria Bus Transfer Station. We met with the Galleria staff, and they were acceptable to the installation of these chargers at this location. From a passenger and operator perspective, this location works well since at this site, we typically include a layover for our passengers to transfer between bus routes. And we also allow for our mandatory operator relief breaks at this location. Once installed, the Rapid Link buses will stop for approximately five to seven minutes under one of the two overhead chargers and added an additional charge to the bus. This will enable the buses to run all day, each day, without having to be pulled out of service. As part of the final design of the overhead chargers, our consultant provided an engineer's estimate of $2.7 million to build this project. Staff worked with PCTPA to secure the necessary funds. The funding sources are shown here on this slide, and they include the Placer County Air Pollution Control District Funds, which are the subject of this council communication. The next steps beyond securing the necessary funding will be to advance construction of this project. The RFP went out in October, and bids were received late last week. Once staff is ready, we will come back to the council to seek approval to award a contract to build the two overhead chargers. Working closely with the Galleria, we've agreed that no construction will take place till after New Year's. And the project itself will take three to four months to complete. However, there are a number of long lead items which result in a completion date of early 2025. At that time, we expect to have our electric buses delivered, and we'll be ready for service.
Thanks, Ed. So this is truly a regional effort between Placer County, PCTPA, Rockland, Lincoln, Roseville, all working together, putting money into this project to make it happen. So it is indeed a regional project. The goal, of course, is to get residents from Lincoln down Highway 65 and get cars off the road. If we can get people on the bus, you know, a busload of people, that's a car for every person on the bus, just about. So that is the intended purpose of this, and get them to where they need to go. You know, the mall, of course, we all like them going to the mall. But medical centers, and then down to Sacramento via Light Rail. So in summary, what we're asking for tonight is a request for council to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement in any related forms and agreements necessary to receive the $500,000 grant funding from the Placer County Air Pollution Control District to assist in the purchase and construction of two overhead electric bus charging stations at the Galleria Mall. Thank you for allowing us to share this information, and Ed and I are available to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilman Albert?
I was just wondering, who pays for the electricity, and is it at retail rate?
So I'm not sure, you know, the rate.
I don't know the rate. I could look into it.
But the project is funded, all the operational costs are funded by the region. So it's not Roseville, the city of Roseville, paying for it. It's coming from other LTF funding sources and grants and other state sources that the region has agreed to put towards this before they get their share. So, because each agency gets a share of some of these pots of money, they all agreed, you know, before we take our cut, we're going to take off the top a certain amount to pay for this regional service.
Okay, so the electricity will be paid for by the service, not necessarily by the city?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll open it up for public comment. Close public comment, bring back the council for any final questions or comments. You know, I'll just say that each of us serve on behalf of the city on various boards and commissions, and I serve on the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency and the Capitol Quarter Joint Powers Authority. So I really wanted to, you know, make sure that our public was aware of this. And, you know, you know, it's not all about lanes. We're trying to do the best with the lanes we have. So thanks for the presentation, and I'll ask the city clerk to read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item 7.14, the City Council will consider adopting Resolution Number 23-423, approving a grant agreement for the Galleria Overhead Charging Project by and between the City of Roseville and Placer County Air Pollution Control District, and authorizing the city manager to execute it and any related documents needed to receive grant funds on behalf of the City of Roseville. If I can have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza. Councilmember Rucucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldeshel.
Thank you for your presentation. Next, we'll go to Special Requests, Reports, and Presentations. Item 8.1, Discretionary Funds, Roseville Joint Union High School District.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, prior to that, we have, we're going to have Vice Mayor Bernusconi recuse herself from this item as she is, Roseville Junior, I'm sorry, Roseville Joint Union High School District is a client of hers. So we'll, thank you. Okay, with that, thank you very much for the opportunity. The City Council did receive a request for council discretionary funds in the amount of $3,000 from the Roseville Joint Union High School District to support their local scholarship program. And here tonight, we understand, we have Jacqueline Seider representing Roseville. Is she in the audience? Thank you. If you can please come up, if she has, if you have any questions. She's here to answer any of your questions, but that's our presentation tonight.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
And City Councilwoman. Thank you for allowing me to come and talk with you about our scholarship program that I'm so incredibly passionate about, and I'd love to answer any of your questions.
Does the council have any questions?
What's the criteria on these scholarships?
So this scholarship that was developed two years ago was, the criteria is for the CTE program, so the Career Technical Education Program. We found that we did not have any type of scholarships at all in our program district-wide, which covers the six comprehensive high schools in our district and our two alternative schools for anything like this. And so two years ago, I came before the City Council and presented this idea, and luckily to thank you, all of you for supporting it, we were able to open that up. And so in just the last couple of weeks in preparing to be here tonight, I was thinking about how I came before you last year and the year before and talked about what you could do to help us with our scholarship program and to build it. And a couple of weeks ago, I thought about the connection about how you guys have actually, the city of Roseville has helped our students, because that's what this whole thing is about. It's not me coming before you and asking for the discretionary funds and then opening a scholarship and having the Career Technical Education Program be supported. But where's the connection with our students? Like, is this really valuable? And I am receipt of a gratitude letter that a young senior graduate from Wood Creek High School last year wrote to the City Council. And I'd love to share it with, I have her permission, if I can have your permission to share it with you, because I think it speaks to the reason I'm here tonight. Her name is Brianna Shen from Wood Creek High School. She said, "Dear Roseville City Council, I would like to thank you for your generosity in choosing me to be the 2023 Roseville City Council Scholarship Recipient. My name is Brianna Shen, and I'm currently going to the University of California, Irvine, as a business administration major. Receiving this scholarship has been a tremendous honor, and I am truly humbled by the recognition from the Roseville City Council. I really love being a resident of Roseville, and I'm glad that I can convey my pride for this city in my essay. Your kindness and belief in my potential has motivated me to continue to work harder in college. The financial support of this scholarship has had a tremendous impact on my college journey. It has helped me by paying for necessary items like my textbooks and easing the burden of educational expenses. Having this support allows me to focus on my academic and personal growth. Since both my sister and I are in college, every little dollar that I receive helps my, helps pay for our college expenses. Thank you again for this incredible scholarship and the bright future that it represents. I am eternally grateful for your role in making it all possible." That's really why I'm here tonight. Sorry, I get emotional because I'm so passionate about this program. But Roseville Joint Union High School last year awarded $248,000 to our senior class across our district. And with the growth of West Park, who unfortunately has, until about three hours ago, did not have a site-specific scholarship, I just wrote one with their booster club, so they'll have one. These funds would go a long way and help a lot of students. So that's why I'm here tonight.
Thanks. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead. Councilman Albert?
I'm very supportive of the scholarship, and there's a good chance I'll support it tonight. One thing I would encourage in the future is to consider possibly, a lot of times when students take these kinds of, go to another college far away from our region, they end up getting internships and often finding jobs in those locations. I would love to see in the future try to focus it more towards regional colleges so we can keep those students here and not have a brain drain by giving them scholarships to go somewhere outside of the area. It would just help build up our own community, hopefully, you know, enhance our workforce here and keep them here when they graduate.
We can absolutely do that. The beautiful thing about this scholarship program is that our donor has the control of the criteria. So if it's the will of the City Council that we make it a local scholarship, college scholarship, we can most definitely do that.
I think that's a really good thing to ask when you do that, because, you know, we want to be able to give money to help the future of our community, and it increases the chances, if we can keep them kind of local, attending colleges nearby.
I work really closely with our CTE departments, and we, I know that we have internships with the city of Roseville. One of our graduates a couple of years ago is off to Grand Canyon University. He is, comes back every summer and works for the city of Roseville. But I do understand what you're saying, and we have some wonderful institutions right in our backyard. We have Jessup right down the street, we have Sac State. Sac State's, they're, the CSU system just did a 6% increase overall, which equates to about $243 per student. So again, this would really help them, but I agree, and we can make that happen.
I just have a question. When a student applies, is it, a student from any of the schools apply? And then all that, all those students are looked at as a possible candidate? Is that what you do from all the schools?
Yes, that's the way that it was written, is that all of the schools in our district, which encompasses the six comprehensive high schools and the two alternative schools, if they have, if they have gone through the CTE pathway at least two years, then they're eligible to apply. And we have, with the $3,000, we awarded three $1,000 scholarships.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I'm going to open it up for public comment. And I'm going to close public comment and see if the council has any other questions or comments.
Well, Mayor, this request couldn't come at a better time, as you and I were just back in DC, and we had a panel discussion that talked about the regional collaboration. And one of those topics was specific on the CTE programs. And I know I personally learned a few things that I didn't know about the program, and I am in support of the, of funding the full request.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? I'll ask the city clerk to read the motion.
Thank you. On item 8.1, the City Council will consider approving $3,000 from council discretionary funds for Roseville Joint Union High School District for the Roseville Joint Uni, I'm sorry, Junior Joint Union High School District Local Scholarship Program. If I can get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll let the record reflect that Vice Mayor Bernusconi did not participate in the discussion or the vote on this matter. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Albert, I'm sorry, Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rucucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldeshel.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Motion passes.
Thank you for coming forward and this important.
Thank you.
All right. Can we have the Vice Mayor come back? Hey, we're going to move into the public hearing portion of our evening. And item 9.1, Terracina North and South Apartment Fee Deferrals. And the first thing I need to do is open the public hearing, and we'll have a staff presentation.
Good evening. Hello? Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council, Melissa Aguiano, your city's Economic Development Director. I am joined tonight by Economic Development Analyst Gina McCall, who is going to provide a brief presentation on a fee deferral request for Terracina North and South Apartment projects.
Thank you. Good evening again, Gina McCall, with the city's Economic Development Department. Just for background, the Terracina North and South Apartments projects are both located in the Creekview specific plan and are being developed by the same developer, USA Properties Fund. Terracina North is located on Westbrook Drive and will include 168 residential units, of which 90 will be affordable units. Terracina South is located on Lower Bank Road and will include 116- Terracina South is located on Lower Bank Road and will include 116 residential units, of which 111 will be affordable units. The project has already received planning entitlements and have been submitted for building permits, so tonight's request is not related to the project design and is just considering the timing for payment of impact fees. The fee deferral requests were submitted to the city by the developers of the Terracina North and South Apartments projects. The request would allow payment of certain city-controlled impact fees to be deferred to building permit occupancy. Typically, these fees would be collected upfront at building permit issuance. The request was reviewed by the various city departments, and the listed fees on this slide are being requested to be deferred. Deferral of these fees was determined to have no impact to the city budget. There are two fee deferrals that total would, that would be deferred, would be just over $4 million, as listed on this slide and detailed in your report. The city does charge interest on the deferral and administrative fees for processing the request, so there will be no financial loss to the city from the fee deferrals. The Roseville Municipal Code and Government Code Section 53083 requires all fee deferrals over $100,000 to be approved via a public hearing. The request is routine in nature, therefore, and the city's fee deferral program is an important economic development tool that facilitates new development that may not otherwise be financially feasible without this program. Staff is therefore recommending that the City Council adopt the two resolutions, approving fee deferrals for the Terracina Apartments projects, for the previously stated impact fees, plus interest until final of building permit and building occupancy. And that concludes my presentation, and the applicant is here as well.
I'll ask the Council if they have any questions. No questions, I'll ask the applicant if they'd like to come up and make any comments.
Good evening. Chris Stewart, on behalf of USA Properties. Thanks for working with us, Gina. We don't have any comments. Thanks for considering the deferral.
All right, I'll, I'll open for a public comment. Are there any public comments? I'll close public comment, and I'll bring it back to the Council for any additional comments. You know, I noted in this, not only, you know, the affordable housing aspect of it, right? And the city leads. I was at a US Conference of Mayors Sacramento Roundtable today, and we're doing pretty darn good. So, you know, this is, this is continuing, continuing that outstanding effort on being able to provide affordable housing, so. All right, I'll ask the Clerk to read the motion. I'll close the public hearing.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item nine point one, the City Council will consider adopting Resolution Number 23-439, approving fee deferrals for the 3440 Westbrook Boulevard Terracina North Apartments Project, and adopting Resolution Number 23-440, approving fee deferrals for the 1040 Lower Bank Road Terracina South Apartment Project. With that, may I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Berniscony.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldashel.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Our next public hearing is a Tax and Equity Fiscal Responsibility Act hearing for Terracina at West Park Apartments. Same project, different staff. All right? I'll open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. That is correct. Mayor Haldashel and Councilmembers, my name is Dennis Kaufman, Assistant City Manager and Chief Financial Officer, and this agenda item is a TEFRA hearing, Tax and Equity Fiscal Responsibility Act. This public hearing is being held pursuant to the TEFRA requirement, which is a requirement by the Internal Revenue Service to be held by the governing body of the jurisdiction in which a project to be financed with tax-exempt bonds is located. And in this case, the Terracina Apartment Complex is in Roseville, so a public hearing is required to be held by the Roseville City Council. The purpose of the planned bond financing is for the acquisition, construction, improvement, and equipping of a multifamily housing project, plus ancillary facilities. And you just heard about the project in the previous agenda item. It's going to be operated by Roseville 712, which is a California Limited Partnership, and that, Roseville 712, is the borrower in this bond issuance. You saw on the previous agenda item, this map with the location of the two apartment buildings. So, the borrowers in this case requested bond financing through the California Municipal Finance Authority, which is a state JPA that issues tax-exempt financing for projects like this. And this particular bond issue will have a not-to-exceed amount of $85 million. The debt is issued by this California Municipal Finance Authority. It's the sole responsibility of the borrower. The city will have no responsibility or legal obligations related to the repayment of this debt. So, the recommended action is for the City Council to adopt a resolution approving the issuance of bonds by that JPA, the CMFA, for the benefit of the borrower in this case and the representative from the developers here, if you have any questions. Thank you.
Can I ask Representative, the applicant, to come forward?
Chris Stewart, on behalf of USA Properties. Darren Bobrowski and Milo Terzic are here from USA Properties, if you have questions about the financing of the project.
Okay, great.
Thanks, Dennis.
Thanks very much. Does the Council have any questions about the financing of the project?
I do.
What does it cover?
What does it, the financing cover?
Yeah, what does it cover?
Components of the project. I'll bring Darren up for a more thorough discussion.
You can't bring these guys here and not, you know, not make them do a little bit of work, okay?
Mr. Mayor.
Good evening. Darren Bobrowski, Senior Vice President with USA Properties Fund. Here, excited to be here tonight to hopefully be on the cusp of starting construction of this 284-unit project. Basically, the bond financing and other parts of the financing pay for the construction costs, as well as soft cost, financing cost, but most of it is the construction of the actual project itself. Impact fees, which some of it are, of them are being deferred, but it's basically all the financing costs and construction costs of the project.
Great, thanks very much. And again, this is, has an affordable housing component to it, so that's important, so thanks. I will open the public comment, see if there's any public comments, close public comment, and close the public hearing, and see if the Council has any additional questions or comments.
No.
Seeing none, I'll ask the City Clerk to read the motion.
Thank you. On item nine point two, the City Council will consider adopting Resolution Number 23424, approving the issuance by the California Municipal Finance Authority of multifamily housing revenue bonds for Terracina at West Park. At this time, may I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Berniscony.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldashel.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Thanks very much for your investment in the City of Roseville. I know it's not your first project, so thanks for your continued investment. We'll next have a public hearing, nine point three, Community Facilities, District Number Four, Public Services, Annexation Number 10, Sierra View Country Club. Country Club, is that right? Yep. I'll open the public hearing and ask for staff's presentation.
Good evening again, Mayor. The tentative map for the Sierra View Country Club subdivision was approved back by the Planning Commission in December of 2021, and according to the conditions of approval, the project needed to annex into our Community Facilities District Number Four, which is our infill maintenance CFD, to pay for the costs of ongoing maintenance obligations related to the project. And on September 20th of this year, the Council approved the resolution of intention to annex this property into CFD Number Four and authorize the levy of the special taxes. The map for this project results in a 21, 23.1-acre parcel that's being subdivided into 75 single-family residential lots. On the next slide, you see a map with the proximity of the project, which is between Diamond Oaks Road and Shasta Street there in the middle of the map. So, the staff recommendation tonight is for Council to approve two resolutions to annex the territory into CFD Number Four, the infill maintenance CFD, as outlined on the slide and in your council communication. And thank you, I'm available to answer any questions.
Does the Council have any questions of staff? No? Okay, I'll open for public comment, close public comment, close the public hearing, inquire if there's any comments. Presentation? I'll ask the Clerk to read the ballot results.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There were 24 votes possible for this annexation. The ballot results indicated that 24 were yes votes, with zero no votes, therefore the annexation was approved.
I'll ask the Clerk to read the motion.
Thank you. On item nine point three, the City Council will consider adopting Resolution Number 23-428, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Roseville of annexation of territory to the Community Facilities District, authorizing the levy of a special tax and submitting the levy of tax to the qualified electors of the City of Roseville, Community Facilities District Number Four, or Public Services, Annexation Number 10, for the Sierra Vista Country Club, and adopting Resolution Number 23-429, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Roseville declaring the results of a special annexation election, determining the validity for prior proceedings, and directing recording of amended notice of a special tax lien for the City of Roseville, Community Facilities District Number Four, Public Services, Annexation Number 10, Sierra View Country Club. At this time, may I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Berniscony.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldashel.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Our next public hearing is nine point four, Northeast Roseville Specific Plan Parcel Eight, Address 1513 Eureka Road and 1411 Rocky Ridge Road Specific Plan Amendment. I'll open the public hearing and ask for staff's presentation.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Haldashel, members of the City Council. I'm Greg Bitter, Planning Manager with your Development Services Department, and I'm here tonight with Derek Ogden, our Senior Planner, and Kenny Shallow, our Associate Planner. I'm going to turn the presentation over to Kenny for the specific plan amendment that will allow the development of a Sprinter, Mercedes Sprinter dealership. So, with that, Kenny?
It's Greg. Good evening, Mayor Haldashel and Councilmembers. So, Parcel Eight includes all the land bordered in red, as shown on this aerial image, with Rocky Ridge Drive to the north, Lead Hill Boulevard to the south, and Eureka Road to the west. A multi-use development plan was approved for Parcel Eight in 1995, which included design guidelines to establish a cohesive set of development criteria. The area shown in the hatch marks is the last remaining site to be developed on Parcel Eight, and has zoning designation of community commercial with a special area overlay, and the land use designation of community commercial and business professional. Surrounding uses include a gas station to the northwest, a walled parking lot, and rose-mead apartments to the northeast, and a medical office building and commercial uses to the south. The Parcel Eight design guidelines include a list of permitted uses, which include auto-related uses such as the gas station and auto parts retail, but auto cells is not currently permitted. The zoning ordinance does allow for auto cells in the community commercial zone with approval of a conditional use permit, and the general plan identifies auto cells to be a primary use for the community commercial land use. The requested specific plan amendment would amend the existing list of uses in the Parcel Eight design guidelines to allow auto cells with approval of a conditional use permit consistent with the zoning ordinance. The CUP process allows staff the ability to impose operational conditions to ensure compatibility with surrounding uses. The request will facilitate the development of approximately 97,000 square foot Sprinter van sales and service facility, which received approval of a CUP and design review permit at the September 20th Planning Commission of this year. However, those approvals are contingent upon approval of the specific plan amendment for you tonight. And renderings of the facility are shown on this slide for reference. Early notification on the project was posted on the Arcoona website and was sent to interested parties, including the Auto Mall. Notices of both Planning Commission and City Council meetings were sent to a 300-foot radius, published in the Press Tribune, and sent to interested parties, as well as posted on the Arcoona website. Prior to the Planning Commission meeting, staff received public comments from a representative of the Granite Bay Dermatology and Laser Center, located to the south of the site at 1535 Eureka Road. They indicated they did not support auto cells at that location and that the use would be better suited at the Auto Mall. Consistent with CEQA, an initial study leading to a negative declaration was prepared, which found the project would not cause any significant environmental impacts, and this document was published for a 20-day public review, and no comments were received. As mentioned, the project was heard by the Planning Commission on September 28th. No public testimony was received at the hearing. A commissioner noted the presence of other auto cells and auto-oriented uses along the Eureka Corridor, and indicated that the Sprinter dealership would be a good addition to the corridor. After deliberating on the item, the Planning Commission adopted the Sprinter Roseville Initial Study Negative Declaration, recommend the City Council approve the specific plan amendment, and approve the conditional use permit and design review permit. In conclusion, the Planning Commission found the project is consistent with the goals, policies, and standards of the Northeast Roseville Specific Plan, zoning ordinance, and general plan. The Planning Commission recommends City Council consider the Sprinter Roseville Initial Study Negative Declaration and adopt a resolution approving the tax-only specific plan amendment. That concludes my presentation. Available for any questions.
Does the Council have any questions? Yes, Councilman Albert?
I have two questions. First one, just clarifying, the Auto Mall did not show concern. I assume they don't have room for them anyway. Is that true, or?
Yeah. My conversation with Damon Everhart, who is the Executive Director of the Roseville Auto Mall Association, was that the association, they're not thrilled with new, new car dealerships outside of the mall, but the mall is full, but they took a position that they wouldn't oppose the proposal.
Great.
And that's what we heard back.
Second question is, do we have any economic impact estimates of a dealership like this coming in?
We don't, for the land use entitlement review, we typically don't look at that, but I can, I have heard through brokers and through some of the applicant's representatives that, that they're looking at northwards of $100 million of sales per year is an initial estimate.
Great. Any other questions or comments?
I have one. This parcel has high-voltage wires going across it, so I'm, do you mind, want to just address the fact that this is probably one of the good uses for a site like this, because they're not over someone's house, over someone's business, they're practically over vehicles.
Yeah, I would say that that's absolutely, one of the aspects that we looked at is, is that the car storage, the inventory, being able to store that inventory underneath those, those high-voltage lines was a benefit to this, and the way the parcel's shaped, you can get the dealership up front. You really, it's really an efficient use of all of that land. We've had other projects approved on this site in the past, office buildings, medical office buildings, and they just didn't have the need to use all of that land in the back. So, this is, this is a project that actually uses all of the property.
Thank you.
I just have a comment. As someone who has to frequent the Mercedes dealership in Rockland for one of my vehicles, this is a, I'm so happy they're building this, because they have been inundated with the Sprinter vans and the RVs that, when I talked to the General Manager a few times, they had mentioned this site, and this is going to relieve a lot of congestion, especially when it backs up even onto the freeway some mornings. And the way that this is, this is routed, a lot of the people with the larger RV specifically, but the Sprinter van RVs with the, with the double axles in the back, they've got enough room to maneuver and get on and off the freeway a lot easier than where they're currently having to go for service. So, I was really excited to see that this particular parcel was selected and that this project was proposed, so, thank you.
All right, well, I'll open up for public comment.
Mayor Haldashel, it would be appropriate for the applicant to?
Absolutely.
Come up and address the Council?
Yeah, I'm sorry. It would be absolutely appropriate.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. My name's Andrew Baez. I'm Vice President of Envision Motors, who is looking to move. We own the Mercedes store in Rockland that the Councilmember had mentioned, and we are very excited about the prospect for some of these reasons that he mentioned, as far as crowding on that specific lot, because of the size of the lot, the lack of size, specifically for Sprinter vans, but also, as the mayor had mentioned when he was making the proclamation regarding global entrepreneurship, the City of Roseville clearly, as he says, has an ethic of entrepreneurship and commercial, commercial ongoings in its city. And this, this facility, we're excited about, because we're going to be able to provide products and services to those businesses that you have in this city for their vans, for their commercial uses, to repair those vans, and then also the, the tax revenue that's going to help this city with, with all of the sales that we have here. So, if there's any questions you have for me, I'm glad to answer any that you have.
Any questions for the applicant?
No.
No, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Now, I'll open it up for public comment, and I'll close public comment and close the public hearing, and see if the Council has any other comments or questions.
Thank you for choosing Roseville.
Yes.
I'll ask the City Clerk to read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item nine point four, the City Council will consider the Sprinter Roseville Initial Study Negative Declaration and adopting Resolution Number 23-434, amending the Northeast Roseville Specific Plan. If I can? If I can have a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Elverd.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Ricucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldashel.
Yes, and thank you for choosing Roseville. All right, our last public hearing of the evening, 9.5 Weed Abatement Public Hearing. I'll open the public hearing and ask the staff to make the presentation. Our Division Chief, Michael Bradley, and Deputy City Attorney Travis Cochran.
You're on my thunder, Mr. Mayor. Can't even do introductions.
Oh, okay. Roll the tape back, and let's start again.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. It's a pleasure to be before you this evening. I'm Travis Cochran, Deputy City Attorney, and with me is Fire Chief, Fire Division Chief, Michael Bradley. This item is a public hearing for weed abatement regarding 1700 New Meadow Drive. It's the second step of the weed abatement process that we previously started, and we'll discuss the process a bit more, in a bit more detail, in the following slides. So as we have discussed previously, weed abatement on private property is authorized by state law, and also it has been incorporated into the city's municipal code specifically through chapter 9.20. The first step of the weed abatement process is to adopt a resolution declaring weeds and other fire hazards to be a public nuisance, and the second step is for the city council to then hold a public hearing to consider any objections from the property owner. If no objections are made, or if there are objections but they're overruled by the city council, then the fire chief or his designee is authorized to move forward with the abatement of the weeds or other fire hazards on that property. The weed abatement process that we're currently discussing essentially began on approximately August 5th with a vegetation fire that was fueled by weeds and vegetation existing on 1700 New Meadow Drive, the property at issue. The city at the time sent written notice to the property owner notifying the owner that such weeds needed to be abated or the city would commence weed abatement efforts. The property owner did not abate the weeds within the 30-day period that was granted to the property owner, and to date, the weeds still have not been abated, and they continue to exist on the property and represent a fire hazard. This next slide is a map demonstrating the location and the boundary of the property. It's the area shaded in in orange, and they have the address and the APN number. And then we also, on the subsequent slide, have the same map, but it shows a satellite view of the property, so you see that overlay, and you can more clearly see the proximity of the subject property to adjacent residential and other commercial development. As I mentioned earlier, tonight's item is the second step of the weed abatement process. On October 18th, the city council approved a resolution declaring the weeds and other overgrown vegetation on the property to be a public nuisance. The resolution also set forth the date, time, and place of the public hearing whereby the council would consider any objections from the property owner, and that resolution also directed staff to provide property, I'm sorry, to provide notice to the owner of the public hearing that had been scheduled. City staff mailed notices, both to the physical address of the property, and because the property is technically owned by a business, that business also has an agent for service of process listed on the Secretary of State's website, and we also sent notices to that registered agent. We sent those notices via regular US mail and also by certified mail, so there's a total of four notices that went out by city staff. For tonight's item, city council will open the public hearing, which Mr. Mayor has already done, and allow the property owner to lodge any objections regarding the city's proposed abatement of the nuisances. Council will then determine whether to overrule any objections or to allow the objections. The act of overruling the objections would allow the fire chief to move forward with the abatement process, or alternatively, allowing the objections, which is essentially granting them, would end the current weed abatement process, and the fire chief or his designee would not move forward with any abatement of the weeds. Regarding the cost of the abatement, if the abatement process moves forward and the city does abate the weeds, staff will make an accounting of all the costs of the abatement. Those will then be presented to the city council for confirmation, and after confirmed, they would be sent to the property owner via invoice for repayment. Typically, the repayment period is 30 days. If the property owner does not reimburse the city for the cost of the abatement within the 30-day period, they are then submitted to the county tax collector, and they are collected with the property taxes for that property. And then the recommended actions from staff, so at this time, open the public hearing, which you have already done. Second recommendation would be to consider any objections from the property owner, if there are any, and third recommendation is to adopt a resolution overruling all the objections and ordering the fire chief to abate the nuisances on the subject property, which again is 1700 New Meadow Drive. And Chief Bradley or I are more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the council?
I have a question. Has the owner responded to any of the notices that you sent him?
We have not received any communications from the property owner or any representatives on his behalf, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. Well, is the, is there representation from anyone here? I'll open the public comment? I'll open, yeah, I'll open for public comment. I'll close public comment, and I'll close the public hearing and inquire if the council has any additional questions or comments. I do have an additional question. So, Will, is there an appeal possible from this, or is this the final action?
This is essentially, I wouldn't call it, this is the final action granting authority to the city to move forward with abatement. So this decision is not necessarily appealable. This would be the time for the property owner to lodge the objections. There is a later, I'll call it an appeal period, to lodge objections to the cost of the abatement. So again, we'll have to have a public hearing for confirmation of the abatement cost, but that's after the abatement has already occurred. By taking this action tonight to overrule any objections, which we haven't had any lodged, that essentially grants the city the authority to go onto the property and abate. And again, that decision is essentially not appealable after this point.
And is this, not just this, but this class of weed abatement or nuisance, would that end up maybe in our appeals board, or is that something else entirely?
No, it's something else entirely. For weed abatement, it goes before the city council, and again, this is sort of the final decision by the council as to whether or not to move forward with the abatement of the weeds.
Yeah, and I meant to ask this in the first round, but there's a term, it must be a term of art, rank growth. What is rank growth?
It's essentially just another term for dead vegetation that presents a fire hazard. Chief Bradley might have a more defined term, but this is essentially anything that represents a fire hazard on the property.
It's just years of unmanaged growth.
Okay.
That would, you know, dramatically impact.
I didn't know it had anything to do with odor or, you know, the type of vegetation or anything like that. Okay, great. Yeah.
Who actually does the weed abatement, and what's the timeframe for that in this, for this instance?
It's the city's contractor through Parks, Cagewen and Mutt.
Okay.
Yep.
And timeframe for this to happen?
We will set that timeframe with Parks as soon as council approves.
Thank you.
Is it typically like 30 days or something, though?
We try to do it as soon as possible, but we also want to try again to notify the property owner, just let them know that we'll be on the property. We like to make contact and give a little bit of period of just showing up tomorrow morning, just so they're aware of what's going on. They should be aware because of the proceedings that have happened, but with a reasonable timeframe, it gets completed.
And if the property owner says, no, I'm going to do it myself, it's too late, because they should have come to this meeting and said something if we move forward with it?
If we showed up and the property was already abated, then we say, great, the abatement has already occurred. It makes our lives a little bit easier, but they are still responsible for the cost, the staff cost, and the time that has been put into the weed abatement efforts at date.
Got it. Okay.
I just have a curious, what kind of equipment do you use to abate this? What do you do?
They have large-scale mowers and weed eaters around the more challenging, difficult areas where the oak trees and terrain that can't be driven with one of the larger commercial mowers.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, if there's nothing else, I'll ask the city clerk to read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item 9.5, the city council will consider adopting resolution number 23-438, overruling all objections regarding the abatement of weeds, dirt, rubbish, and/or rank growth on certain property within the city, and ordering the destruction or removal thereof. At this time, may I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Elverd.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Ricucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldashel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks very much for your vote.
Thank you.
All right, we've come to the point in the evening where we'll open for a second round of public comment on non-agenda items, and we're done. So I was asked the city manager if he has any comment, additional?
I do have a comment. I do, I do. Couldn't we get the slide pulled up, John? So what started as a vision, as part of the strategic planning process, has come to fruition. My Roseville app, which is our customer response management program, is going to be going live. It's going to transform the way we interact and connect with our residents. Not only will it make our interactions more efficient and effective, it'll really change not only the feeling but the transparency. This will be a great improvement, and it's just, it's been a long time coming and worked really hard through the last, really, two to three years. And so I want to thank the council for their vision, bringing this forward, and the strategic plan, and thank, obviously, our IT staff and all the department staff that worked really hard over the last year to bring this live. I think it's going to be a great improvement, and I think we're really proud of it. And so I just wanted to share that, and it'll be going out to most of our homes through the mail or all of our social media channels, and it'll be on all of our billboards, because we really want to take a big splash and get it out there and get it to you, get it into you. So, thank you.
So when does it start?
It'll be going out this week on various channels.
Great.
I have questions, because when I was at the city website today, down in the bottom right-hand corner, there's a little chat button. Is that the same thing?
It is, it is. So the chat bot.
I asked a question.
Rosie, Rosie is the nickname, and so we've actually been beta-testing this with different groups for the last few months, kind of working the bugs out and smoothing it, because it's, it sounds easy to say, hey, we're going to do a customer response management software program and roll it out, but there's a lot more work going into detail. And so we've been working through it, and yes, the chat bot is one of those.
Okay, great, thanks. Ask the city attorney if she has anything.
I can't top that, so.
I'm sorry?
I can't top that.
Okay. Well, you could, but, all right. I'm going to invite council members to report on any committee activities or community activities. Councilwoman Ricucci, would you start us off?
Sure, Will. Just a few. Today, NACWA, Northern California Water Association, they had a board meeting here in Roseville, and I'm a board representative for Roseville, and this is a real great opportunity for them to see what our aquifer recharge and storage unit looks like. We were on, we have seven of them that are functioning, and we were at Solari Well site, and it was really fun to show others what we have in the respect that when we have board members, we go to other sites, so we get to learn about them. So I'm learning about what do rice farmers do with their water, and what does walnut growers do, and how we all have, we use water, and how we can use it efficiently and have water, you know, for future use. So they really enjoyed that. We had the meeting at Martha Riley's conference room, and it was, they're well-received. They really enjoyed coming to Roseville and learning something. Our staff was great. They answered all kinds of questions, and they really enjoyed being here. Also, last week, I was able to give a certificate appreciation from the mayor and council members for Melinda Sermani, and she's a longtime Roseville resident and Cherry Glen and retired school teacher, lived over 30 years in Cherry Glen area, but also she's really helped start the neighborhood association in her community, and has been president for a long, long time. And so this was a neighborhood association meeting and congratulating her on her good works in the community. She's still going to be a part of the association and help, but she decided she was going to pass the baton from president to somebody else, so it was nice to acknowledge her. She's done a lot for the community as a whole. And one other thing, this weekend, I was able to be at an event they had at the Galleria. It was called Spooktacular Event. They had it last year, too, and this was for raising awareness for blood donations and the need for blood. Vice Mayor Bernusconi was there with a lot of our local representatives supporting this act. Krista donated blood, I donated blood that day, and it was just an opportunity to raise awareness that, you know, there is a great need for blood, and, you know, you don't always know you're going to be one of the need or your family because accidents and things happen, and you don't always know about it. Those are a couple of things I wanted to highlight. Thank you.
Councilmember Mendoza?
The Placer County LFO met this afternoon on an appeals hearing related to items in Lincoln, nothing related to Roseville to report out on, and I had the pleasure of being back in Washington DC last week with our mayor and city manager and some of our other city staff collaborating on regional issues. It was a very good meeting. A lot of good information was shared about how well we are doing on hot-button topics here in the region, and I think the mayor said it very well at the beginning of tonight's meeting. We are doing a lot of things very well as a city. I, you know, I'm probably biased here, but I think we really outshined a lot of the other areas in our region, and I'm just very proud of the work behind the scenes with our staff and my fellow electeds up here on just, when you see it being presented and how much work we actually get done here with a city this size, it's quite impressive when we're on the regional stage up there. Other than that, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Elverd?
Well, probably the best service to the city I was able to provide since our last council meeting was taking a 10-day vacation so I could recharge batteries. It was nice to get away and come back more energized. I did get to attend, I just walked around the West Park neighborhood, several blocks from my house in a loop, and it was just amazing how many homes were just super decorated. We had huge crowds in our community. There was a Disney on Garland event. It was a multifaceted light show with snow and sparks and all kinds of interesting things, and a really big, multi-backyard haunted house that raised money for a nonprofit organization. So it was just fun to watch the community all come out, and the kids were just having a blast. And today, I got to host the Girl Scout Troop 1326, who did the Pledge of Allegiance today. They were here for a couple hours before our meeting, learning about what the city council does. They toured the council chambers, and they all used the mayor's gavel, practiced on it. So thank you for loaning that out. Bruce, they were excited to be able to do that, and they got to go in the back rooms, see how the video was processed, or how the video's done. They all got to change cameras in the room, and they just had a blast. And I always enjoy this, I know all the council members enjoy this, because these are our future leaders. They're learning to serve now, and they had really good insightful questions and things they would like to see about their future city maintained and things. So it was just nice to talk to them. It's always uplifting when we get served that way, and that's all.
Vice Mayor Bernusconi?
Thank you. I think that all of the trick-or-treaters in my neighborhood, it must have been in your neighborhood, because we only had probably about a dozen, and I couldn't believe it. So it was a very light night. I have lots of candy left over.
Like 300.
Yeah, you too, Dom?
Yes, none. I have too much leftover candy.
Yes, it's a terrible problem to have. So the last couple weeks, just a few things to share. I joined the mayor from Rockland, council members from Lincoln, and our economic development staff on a tour of Beal Air Force Base last week, which was really informational. I had no idea about everything that takes place on that airbase, but essentially, they are their own city. They have their own landfill, their own utility, water, they're self-sufficient, and they provided an incredible service to our region and our nation. I was a panelist at the Sacramento Asian Chamber in Elk Grove with the Elk Grove mayor and the Folsom mayor, talking all things related to Roseville and things that we do unique, and we had an opportunity, each of us, to answer the same questions, and I want to thank Melissa for helping me with, to prepare, because there was, you know, a little bit of competitive nature. competitive nature between the cities and what is best about each of our cities. I attended the government relations meeting last Friday morning, where the representative from the auto mall and Galleria spoke about the economic impacts that they're seeing on their properties, either with the dealers, the businesses that go into the mall, so that was really interesting. Thank you to Pauline, who gave her second pint of blood as a nurse, two years in a row. We, for a couple hours at the mall, joined my colleagues from Lincoln and Rockland City Council, and there were 22 pints of blood total that were given that day, and especially important as we head into the holidays. I know tomorrow night, many of us will be at the law enforcement awards dinner. On my Ring camera yesterday morning, I picked up a call, and my meter was updated, so those are all in effect. Went just exactly as we were told as residents, knocked on the door, he said the power was going to be off for approximately 10 seconds. Not a problem. It's all done. Happy that it's complete. So also really proud of our city, happy about that app being launched. Congratulations. And that's all I have for this evening.
Great, thanks very much. As I mentioned earlier today, it's ironic. I work for Northern California Water Association. The board meeting was here, but the U.S. Conference of Mayors had a Sacramento Round Table, and so I had to stay downtown and not come. But as Councilwoman Rakucci said, you know, some of our farmers don't know what Aquafor Storage and Recovery is. So we started off with what's the greatest challenge for each of the cities. Some of the common topics were discussed. I think what's an interesting thing was, we've talked about transformers and the shortage of transformers. Well, the mayor from Yuba City told me that the new Costco in Linda, just south of Marysville, was supposed to open October 5th, but they don't have a transformer. So they got a building, it's ready to go, and I think he said, "Not sure that it's going to open by the end of the year." And so, you know, supply chain, I had mentioned, supply chain is an issue, and certainly is one of the issues, and then facing our city as well. And he just said, "Yeah, I don't think our Costco's going to open before the -- or that Costco's going to open before the end of the year." It was a good discussion. Mayor Steinberg was there, Mayor Bobby Singh from Elk Grove was there, Mayor Guerrero from West Sacramento, Siri from Rancho Cordova. I mentioned Mayor Joyner from Lincoln was there. So it was a good discussion and opportunity. They do this several places, several times a year around the country to hear what they can do for cities of all sizes. So I did that earlier today. As Councilmember Mendoza mentioned, we were back last week. I know what it feels like to be a congressman. We flew out Tuesday, flew back Friday, had two very packed days, you know, with -- we had five of the city managers there talking about fiscal uncertainty going forward. We had superintendents, and as Councilmember Mendoza mentioned earlier, the CTE was prominently. We had a briefing from our economic development folks. We had a very entertaining lunchtime speaker, Rich Gold, who, you know, from, I can't remember the firm he's from, but as we were there, they were deciding who was going to be the Speaker of the House, right? And he left that meeting and said, "Who would want to be?" 15 minutes later, there was a Speaker of the House. So I guess he went and did his magic. I'm not sure. We had a visit from Wes Luhan, who is from this area originally, worked for Union Pacific in Washington, D.C. So it was very, very, two days of just, you know, there's 100 people there. I grew up in the area. My friends came on Tuesday night, and they looked at our reception, and they said, "This is one county?" I said, "It's one very special county," so, and one very special jurisdiction. So that was really very valuable to do. As I mentioned, you know, I felt a little bit like a congressman, you know, with the flight schedules and the action pack. Well, Saturday night, I happened to be at the Dewali event at the grounds, celebrating the Festival of Lights, and Congressman Kylie was there, and I mentioned to him that -- he asked me how my flight was, and I said, "Boy, I don't want to do your job," right? That's rigorous, right? And they had to be back today, so they had an extra day. Just a couple other things. Our boards and commissions dinner, we always appreciate those who serve on our boards and commissions. That's November 14th. I get to do what Vice Mayor Bernusconi did in past years. I get to visit the Quail Glen third graders on the 14th. And as I mentioned earlier, with our presentation on the Bus Rapid Transit, you know, we're really, and Placer Business Alliance, we're really working as a region. We have our three-by-three with Lincoln and Rockland and Roseville coming up November 13th. I'm sure there's more, but that's enough for now. I entertain a motion to adjourn until our meeting on, let me see if I can do the math, 8/15, November 15th, right?
Yep.
Take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right.